I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Thank you for the roll call, please.
Here's the lead.
Here.
Council of Bragden.
Present.
Council of Danforth.
Here.
Council of Magor.
Here.
Council of McEwan.
Here.
Council of Pelletier.
Here.
Council of Prey.
Yeah. You could all join me in the pledge allegiance, please?
The United States of America and the Republic, which stands a nation of law, business, reading, justice for all.
Thank you, and seeing that there is an adjustment to the agenda, there's a addition of order number two seventy-five twenty-two. Any other additions? No, seeing none. Seeking approval the minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, regular town council meeting?
Oh, move.
Second, by Council of the Doors, saying to my Council of Bragden, any discussion in the council? Of the public? Also seeing none back to council, all in favor?
Bye.
Oh, yeah, we're doing roll call. Excuse me. Since we have a counselor on Zoom, Council of Pelletier.
Bye.
Council of Prey.
Hi.
Council of Danforth.
Hi.
Council of McEwan.
Hi.
Chair Gulli by Council of Magor.
Hi.
Council of Bragden.
Hi.
Pass the seven zero. And with that, that brings us to special presentations. We have the Panquish Housing Director here with us, Jason Burge, to give us a presentation. Feel free to come up to the podium. Did you need a plug into anything too for?
I actually have a mic.
Oh, great.
Oh, it isn't there? Yeah.
Could you coordinate on a presentation for?
He's gonna share his.
Perfect.
Well, all goes according. Yes. All right. Thank you very much for allowing me to come speak. Was that her? Thanks very much for speaking about our intended plans for Seventh Street. So as, as I was introduced, my name is Jason Burge of the House of Republicans. Oh, yeah, sure. That better? Okay. Um, and my hope tonight is to talk a little bit about our plans, a quick overview of our organization, of course. Because I actually probably wouldn't be allowed back and not to plug in resources that we provide globally, but more importantly, though, I think it'd be an opportunity or best opportunity to allow for questions, right? Our project is somewhat unique, and it's not every day that a town has someone come forward and poses thirty-six new units of housing, and that that could have impact, and certainly want to talk about that and happy to answer any question that I can at this time. Naturally, we're still in largely pending stages, and not everything is born out yet. Haven't selected contractor. We haven't done that. This is sort of the first step in the process for us. So, as you can see on the screen here, I don't do any sort of high-tech PowerPoint presentations. I try to but a very quick overview of Panquish. We've been in operation for five years as a nonprofit community action agency. So, in a nutshell, our purpose and mission is to address poverty, and we do so in a very comprehensive way. We have over seventy programs and services. My I often say it's unfortunate that we have seven programs and services, right? And I think you could all agree, in an ideal world, our organization wouldn't have to be this big and wouldn't have to be comprehensive, right? But reality is the sheer financial situation, the sheer economic situation, excuse me, that we have requires us to address some of the many individuals in our region in particular that would otherwise go without, just because the market forces otherwise don't. So to put that in context, though, we serve approximately six thousand individuals every day, unique individuals every day with our programs and service. And those include everything from transportation, heating assistance, home repair, affordable housing, housing, basically, essentially second chance mortgages for homeownership, childcare head start, and a whole host. If I could be here all night, just talk about that, but that's where the plug comes in. So if any of you or anyone sitting at home know of anyone struggling financially, we always urge people to call, because we may not be the right answer, but we know in theory, the organization can help if they're not able to. So certainly encourage them. Getting now back to closer to the work that I do, though, in my department, we have between the homes that we've already built and those that are either in our pipeline for construction, production, and acquisition, we have over six hundred in the Eastern Maine area. So what I'll, what I'll do here is jump into the plan itself, the concept that we have in mind right now. I have some pictures and and certainly, but it's, given the complexity of building design and those kinds of things, it's going to be hard to really delve into the overall design here, but naturally that the planning board is going to be that soon. And anyone that is, that's interested, either council member or a member of the community, has an interest in learning about our project, happy to share some more details electronically, or have a face-to-face conversation, kind of delve in, dig into sort of nuts and bolts that goes into the building itself, or those that we maybe rent. So the building that we propose to build is really continuation of the design that we're trying to perfect over time. It saves us money to kind of really know what we're going into, to understand the concept, building mechanics, the system, all those pieces. So we have the luxury of doing what, sort of going a step further than other developers traditionally do, to show a, you know, pastel or watercolored rendering of the building, right? Instead, I can show you physically or many pictures, videos, by two other essentially versions of this building can be done. And I think our intent and our goal is to continue to protect that model over time. So this would be either the third or the fourth version of that building that will go, depending on exactly when construction starts. So I'll show you some of those photos later, but most of the detail that I have here is very basic in general, but again, have much more information if anyone really wants to dive into it, but I don't want to pour people some of the nuanced building that's really not interesting. So we would propose to build a three-story building with a flat roof in order to certainly get under the proposal in front of you all, and tonight even the forty-foot tight restriction. But thirty-six one-bedroom units in a three-story building, so fairly, fairly compact, fairly tight, but the reality is these homes are going to be for traditionally individuals that are fifty-five and older. So we're not talking about family housing, this would be instead units that, as the screen range anywhere from seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty, almost towards eight hundred square feet. If, if not necessary for us, or it wouldn't be, I guess, should be, it's financially viable for us with current building technology to build out and have multiple foundations, multiple roofs, and heating systems, and things like that, to create efficiency scale and achieve a faster build-up, especially with your own resource. The building itself, though, will have onsite laundry, extra storage in the basins, as well as community zones and other open areas for socializing in the building. And then we implement in this building, our others, gardening programs, will have space dedicated for tenants to grow their own vegetables. And we provide supports. We have a, we have a staff person who's a master gardener. We have other organizations partnered with to make sure that we're providing our fertilizer and working with tenants on educating around we often will expand the garden area over time, as well as many other programs and services that we offer. So the property at Seventh Street Street has a current building on, right in Avenue School, if I remember correctly, that and it's changed since a few times now, it's currently an office building, more of a commercial style, but intend over time, intend to convert some of it to residential. I'll speak a little bit more about our plans with that building in a moment. Focus for us for now is personally utilizing this brass, the flattened brass area that otherwise was being playground or being undeveloped over time. In part because for us, we want to strike while the iron is hot. We have a time by funding that we need to build a larger structure. We want to move in that direction because the stars are aligned. We're in a bit of a holding pattern, a brick building. We submitted a request to the Comstock County Commissioners for our, and that request is pending, along with some other initiatives to count the lot. And I really hope, I regret being on this thing here. If that becomes, I really apologize. I'm gonna, I'll run up there and look at that, like Bob Barker. My hope is that again, I did leave a lot of the layers up in terms of topography, parking spaces, and a number of details that our engineers use, not only to convey to contractors and to others, the reality is, I think, in some respects, you could even say this is intentional, because there's a lot of thought that goes into this design, right? We've met with city staff and intentional about addressing some of their concerns and need that we have an interest, but this isn't a fly-by-night operation. Factor in the amount of investment that goes into the building and the expectations that our funders have of us building some of these properties. We have to go to the end in order to ensure that every, every aspect of the building is factored in, right? We, while we go into construction with a contingency, our strong goal or our strong hope is that we never have thought out, most of us, well ahead of time, was leaving stuff to chance or wanting to squabble with contractors, something left out. In fact, but at the top of the screen is Spring Street. And down towards what would be the bottom would be towards downtown and Congress Street is probably over here where the butter is are. The, the square, the box here is a brick building, the existing brick building, to the north of it, to the top of the street, that's where the existing parking space is currently. The building that we're proposing has about eleven thousand square feet of sort of brown cover. We're going to go up with an elevator, a street, but we'll have ample parking within that space. Not only one, minimum of one parking space per unit, again, they're one better, one better homes, as well as a number of these spaces as well, with location for dumpsters and a variety of other features. And obviously the garden area that I highlighted in the bottom. Our intent, big picture, would be to divide the lot. We don't have the exact lot line identified here, but maybe somewhere sort of down where the middle of Arustic Avenue, Paper Street used to run, not only to allow for redevelopment of the brick building, which we fully intend to do, but also to allow for ample space for the firing mass, whatever, access, traditional access is going to be for the building itself. Something I forgot to say, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to stop explaining further. Before I was, you're certainly, I will, I will not take offense to back up. So like I said, we have somewhat the luxury of being able to provide some photos of current buildings done. And so the building here, which, you know, at first someone could, right, somewhat concerned that us proposing thirty-six units in one, one building, resulting in a big, ugly box. But we go to great lengths with an architect and engineers and others, to ensure that there's at least some variation with colors and trim, as well as just actual physical, this allow a bit of variation. Can't necessarily skip here, but if you proceed in person, you can tell that it's a bit more of an extensor, but the reality is, just because someone doesn't have a shabby box, it's going to over time degrade and not be in a condition that any one of us would want. The building that we're proposing, of course, will change slightly from this model, because this building has a history that would go above what your proposed height restriction would be in this zone. It could end up traditionally on forty-five feet, so we're proposing go with a flat roof that's not ideal in Maine, of course, as many of you can imagine, but Galley is also, as we're evolving the design different mechanical systems as technology evolves. And so working with a variety of funders' expectations around energy performance and others, are more just flat, actually, houses, so better, they typically moving now inside the building, colors may change slightly, but otherwise, this is going to be the lobby area. One of the common re-designated common spaces, well as areas within the building for socialization, meeting nooks, you know, those kinds of things, idea being that if someone wanted to get out of their apartment or home, they have some space outside or inside as well. This would be a typical unit. I know the picture is slightly distorted, and in fact, if there's no oven, it's funny story about the pandemic. I could tell you some other time about how hard it was to buy, at the time, at least forty ovens in one house. Managed to pull it off. What you can see here is traditional wood cabinets. Obviously, we could have orders to granite countertop, but we try to build intention about the products, but being of high quality, because in our world, we have consider first costs and second and third costs. So when we select the materials for the buildings, we intentionally go with higher quality, higher-end materials, because we have to have them last longer. Not only do our investors and the funders expect that the quality of the homes will be of high quality, because we don't want to perpetuate the perception that people that, because they're low income, don't deserve adequate finishes. But also, too, after the building is built dismiss the investment dollars and substitutes to build the buildings, we're essentially on our own. So we intentionally put a higher quality material in, because once the building is operational, we're renting at a low market rate to make it affordable, that are otherwise not at, in traditional or not market incomes. And so we don't have a lot of cash flow, just to replace a refrigerator, replace some appliance or some cabinet, or what have you, that failed or were good for us, because so very intentional about that, not only from an economic basis, but just because it makes sense of all. So a traditional unit here with a small dining area, living area, that what you don't see to your left would be a full bathroom, and then also the door to then next, I just show what is extreme example, only to pay to make sure that when we design these buildings in particular, we, some, some would argue, even right, so we may have extremes in order to ensure accessibility. So while we, while we often go exceed the number of minimum, state minimum standard EPA designated units, those that are fully accessible, the individuals that need that feature, we go intentionally add what's traditionally twenty or so units that essentially could meet that designation if you wanted to, right? If you actually wanted to have that, you shouldn't that. And that's because we find that in particular older adults, when they, when they come to our housing, will want to be there for decades, right? And that's, that's, that's beautiful, that's ideal, right? What makes the most sense is allowing them to age in place by having those grab bars and having those things already in their home, so they feel comfortable, they are allowed to thrive, versus feeling like a burden or feeling like they can't stay there long-term, because they just can't get around, can't the facility, can't otherwise, so it's certainly an upfront cost, but our funders are appreciative of that, because the reality of them today weren't do it at, at the start of construction, would end up really incurring more cost by having to, to address their, their I'll stop rambling and only just to show what otherwise, like, do your picture, but what I overarching point by showing this, that our design is, is intentional in that it, we're want to be good neighbors, right? Want to make sure that we're not just going to build this, come to town, come to York, build something and say, like it or love it, right? We have to build this and have another option. We're not going to so these pictures, two different buildings, actually right on the same, right on the same streets, driveway. Version one and version two of this but I want to show is a something that we've done in response to it, so a number of concerned neighbors that have come to planning board meetings, project meetings, and say, well, I'm nervous about the impact on my property, right? I don't want light pollution, I don't want a variety of other surfaces. So we intentionally choose the lighting package. It is more expensive, but as you can see, and the main reason why I chose this image was to be intentional about sort of the, and I swear, I don't even have the skills, even if I wanted to, but the lighting doesn't bleed over significantly in any way into the neighboring property. So our property line is sort of somewhat over here. The reality is the diamond lighting package and the design aside, the building, and other aspects to be less, as less intrusive as possible on the neighbors, right? Because the last thing we wanted to do is be the position where we just make enemies of our neighbors, and we're constantly having to really address their concerns, issues, unfounded or not, and then establish a reputation as a organization that makes it a lot harder for me to come to my job in the next town, right, in order to be able to trust another community that will have I'm about to cough again, so it's a good time to pause. I will stop sharing here, but I can certainly photos again, but like I stressed in the beginning, certain questions or highlights in particular about our
Thank you, Jason, for that detailed and thoughtful presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Council of the Door.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, thank you very much for a very thorough and very informative presentation. Thank you again for having interest in the non-rocket area and wanting to go ahead and provide more housing, which desperately needed. It looks like it's a good location for you. I like the layout of it. I, my only big question I was going to have, and answered it already, was there was going to be an elevator in it, considering the age group that you were, you know, aiming for. I, I think that would be important. There is, that's great. I, I find it very I'm just glad that you, you're going to do this. I'm glad that this is something we can, we can look forward to. Any idea when possibly groundbreaking or whatever is going to be able to start for this?
Sure. With any look, well, not with any luck, our projection right now is that we can start construction in spring of next year. If you have a bit of, assuming we are successful with the planning board application and those kind of things, we would then move on to final construction, estimating with a firm, they'll have to go out with their subs and be back to us, but otherwise projections, spring, assuming markets don't crash and things stop.
And I realize you probably have a construction company that's going to oversee the project, but is local is it going to be kind of an opportunity for local contractors to bid in on the jobs and be part of the construction project?
Very good question. So we haven't selected the general contractor that we would choose, we'll use their construction approach, where we hire a firm to really be guys in years and select the subs and sort of for the caps, well, make sure that we're showing up when they need to, but the intent in the, we also always encourage certain is for those general contractors to reach out to us, but we don't have to do much pressing, because the reality is, you know, the distance that many other subs can travel anyway, and find a lot of local talent are going to pretty good leg up when it comes to pricing, just because of sheer transportation, just to go costs getting there. I will say that and it's not something that I can ever really promise. There are studies that show how many jobs it is a part of this but it's very situational, right? Because I don't know what's going to happen in spring, as many other contractors are could easily vouch for. Many are, have their dance card fill, you know, filled or full through the next summer, right? So it's going to be hard for me to say exactly the percentage, but with what we projected, as seventy-dollar destruction costs, more likely than not, right, to have some sort of effect in the community.
Now, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the, the existing building, the, the former Arustic Avenue School, that building will be renovated after the construction of the, the main building that you discussed here on the, on the adjacent lawn?
Not afterwards, but probably, probably simultaneously, but we have to treat it, we have to, we're going to have to treat it essentially as two separate worlds, two separate projects. Many of the characters may be the same in terms of contractors, but reality is our, our primary focus is going to be the main, the new building. In part because we have very stringent guidelines and deadlines and expectations from our funders. Once the clock starts, we have to burn and move quickly through the construction process. We wouldn't really allow or couldn't allow for contractors to, to kind of go back and forth, because there is pretty tight times, right? So in an, in an ideal world, you need to do a timeline. So there's only sort of one period of disruption and trucks and those kinds of things, but so yes, our intent, I, I, then I told you that I was going to go back to it and actually forgot to, so I apologize, but our intent with the brick building to focus mostly on residential development. That's our, that's our bread and butter, and that's obviously the highest. However, building is designed and laid out such that we really want to establish a mixed use of the building. There, there's one commercial tenant there that I think does a good service to the community and would have a bridge use with the rest of our use on the second floor. While I haven't been in the building in a few months, the sec, or the primary, or on top floor, are largely underutilized, and so we're, it's not like we're going to be keeping a lot of this utilized on those floors, which is where we would primarily focus our efforts on for the public. In that building, and I'm rambling on, I apologize, so in our, in our intent right now is to focus that redevelopment workforce houses, probably two bedrooms, bedroom apartments, wouldn't really do well to put Probably two bedrooms, bedroom apartments. Wouldn't really do well to put an elevator in that building. But so because of that walk-up style, families usually give you groceries and that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other council comment or question? Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. That's fun. I thank you very much for your presentation. Actually, just answered all any question that I would have had. And housing is an extreme need in the community, as we all very much know. And just appreciate the presentation and looking forward to see how this project continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKeon. Any other council comment or question? Yes, Councilor Braden. Just a reminder for everybody, I see a couple of chats. We are not reading the chats anymore. If you have a question, you need to address this as if you were here in person. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Braden. Any other, yeah, Councilor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to thank you, Jason, for coming tonight. And your presentation was very informative in your pictures, you know, laid it out clearly what it would look like and enhance the neighborhood. So Councilor Madour asked all the questions that I had on my docket, so I think I'm good with the questions, but thank you for coming.
Thank you. Just echoing what's been said, the support for your project and the need, just appreciate your interest. Obviously, another consideration, you, you mentioned emergency services and other things like that and investors. At one point you mentioned that you have investors. Will this entity be held as a for-profit entity or a non-profit entity?
So it will be a for-profit. That and for investors to receive not only depreciation, but comply with the IRS rules.
Thank you. And for those in the public, the reason I ask that, if you don't know, is for-profit companies can get taxed by the municipality. Whereas nonprofits generally don't. We've historically asked nonprofits in the community to pay in lieu of taxes. But hearing that that is a for-profit building with that estimated range of value. Plus the value to the community as a whole in terms of housing and all the other services you provide. Sounds pretty fantastic. So thank you again. Any other comment or question from the public? And seeing none, thank you, Jason, for being here and answering our questions.
Thank you all.
And up next, we have our library director, Diana. If you wouldn't mind giving us your quarterly update whenever you're ready.
Can you all hear? You can all hear me clearly. So I'm, yeah, I'm Diana, how I'm the library director. And for anyone who didn't hear my previous presentation, I've started to do these this year just to give the council and the public. More insight into finances of the library, since we're in kind of the unusual position of being. Receiving a lot of municipal funding while not department. So this presentation is focused on the performance of our twenty twenty two budget. And I'm also going to share a draft budget, which has not yet been fully approved by my board. But it should be pretty close to what we're looking at for next year. I had initially intended to focus this on the relationship between the library and Villanocket Library Corporation. I think I've said it on my reports too well, but this just felt really timely with our budget of people coming up. And so I plan to address that future probably at the January presentation. But if you have any questions about that, it's probably gonna come up during the, the budget and I'm happy to elaborate. All right, so. Is this too loud? I feel like it's echoing everywhere. All right. So just a quick refresher, I did mention this the last presentation. But I'm gonna mostly be talking about our library operating budget, operating fund. We also have restricted accounts that cover our major programs. And there's this sort of in-between funding, school funding, which is gonna be highlighted today. Which previously was considered restricted, but actually is funding two and a half of our basic operating staff. So in twenty twenty two, we're making switch and including that as a part of our operating budget. Because I can get more accurately reflects what it takes to operate the library. So that's just to contextualize this a little bit. Okay, so big picture, twenty twenty two budget, I'm starting with income and just sharing a bit about how we're doing. In terms of donations, we are a little bit ahead of what we would expect at this point in the year. Because there was some overflow from our twenty twenty one fundraising that even early in the year. So we're gonna try to do that earlier this year so that there's not that awkward and confusing overlap. But all in all, we're in great shape there and we'll be sending out that fundraising, fundraising appeal in the next couple of weeks. The Friends of the Library are support group, which is actually a separate nonprofit that does fundraisers for us. Other engagement events, they've contributed twenty thousand dollars of suspected using basing grassroots effort that we'd like to have. On our operating grants. So initially, we thought that we would need to apply for a lot more operating grants than, than we actually did. So that was lower than expected. There's also a couple of grants that we've chosen to apply to the twenty twenty budget. Said the twenty twenty two budget, one of them strategic planning, just didn't really get around to doing that this year, but it'll be next budget. Library revenue, this is the fees, the revenue that we receive for taxes, coffins, diner. Our income. And lastly, the town of Villanocket, we get budgeted for that to remain flat at seventy five thousand. And thankfully, you all have increased that, so. I'm gonna get in a little more detail of this, you can see the comparison from twenty twenty one to and our proposed budget. So you'll see, I'm gonna focus now on twenty twenty side on the far right. For donations, we're actually budgeting that to go down because we are starting an endowment fund. And we're going to try to get some donors to contribute to that instead, which will support our operations for the long run. This is a fund that will be managed and invested by Main Community Foundation, so it can grow over time. So there just, it's gonna be less donation showing up in the operating budget itself. Just gonna point out major things, but if you have any questions about a line item, you'll get asked. Employee retention credit. So we did apply. For the employee retention credit program, governmental program that credits businesses for retaining employees. During the COVID pandemic, show a loss of revenue. We're expecting to receive more than ten thousand dollars from that, which is awesome. But this is how much we'd like to apply to the budget. And then you'll see the school grant that I referred to. So I included that in our income. Well, while this is happening, any questions so far? I continue. So, yeah, you'll see the, the school funding, which is a little over a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. They've made a commitment for the next three years to fund us at at least a hundred thousand dollars, which is amazing. And gives us a lot more freedom to. Invest in our programs and really operate at our, our full potential. The school transition grant, I have moved basically from the twenty twenty two budget to the twenty twenty budget. And that will support our strategic planning in part. And then see revenue staying at a similar level and the town contribution. So that brings our total income for next year to about two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. I've broken this down a little bit more notes that I mentioned. Questions about income before I get into the expense categories?
Any questions from the council or the public?
Oh, just one more thing to show that change over time. Most of the categories are similar except for which one? Little one, operating grants. See, that's just reflecting that increased school funding, which we had in twenty twenty two, but it's considered restricted. Love color coding. Great. So expenses, how are we doing this year? Collection and community engagement, which community engagement is kind of a broad term, but it refers to supplies that we need. Programs like snacks, marketing, things like that. Those two are pretty on track. Facilities, you'll see, I, I would say it's also on track. We still have at least one repair that we need to do regarding the flooding in our basement. Possibly replacing one or two toilets. So that's gonna be an expense for the year is up. And then also our utilities tend to increase in the colder months. But I would say that category is on track. Administration, you'll see that's much lower and that's because we haven't. Paid for our nine ninety preparation and our independent financial debt. That should be wrapping up the next week or two, and that is a major expense that will show up in that category. And then also, we had budgeted to do strategic planning, but didn't. So that's why not seeing those expenses there. Payroll is also on track. So all in all, you can see we're about eighty-three percent through the year. I calculated that earlier. And for income, we are. Raise, I think eighty-seven percent of what we need to for the year. And in terms of expenses, we've spent seventy-seven percent of what we expected to for the full year. Looking to next year, our twenty twenty three budget for expenses. Here we have collection and community engagement. Those are pretty much staying the same. Not a lot of changes there. Moving on to facilities. This is also pretty similar, a couple of adjustments. We have needed to spend more than have in the past on services like name plowing and shoveling. Just the increase in cost of living, people being charged more. And also our building is being used really at its full capacity and it's getting tricky. So we need to clean the carpets, we need to invest in keeping our building in good shape. So that's that professional services category, the base sounding one. And utilities, you know, everyone's electricity is going up and so is ours. Questions about facilities?
Questions in the council or the public?
Moving on, so this is where you're gonna see a big shift, the library administration. It's, a couple of these are just one-time expenses, strategic planning that I mentioned. So hiring a consultant to assist us with that. I think it's really important to have a neutral voice there facilitating those kinds of discussions. And we haven't ever done a process like that that I'm aware of, so it's really time to figure out our priorities and invest in that. So that's an administrative expense for this year that you'll see under consulting and asset management. Another half of that category, so about nine thousand dollars. Our asset management fees that we are required to pay on behalf of Villanocket Library Support Corporation. Should I get into that? Or should I save that for January? Anyone? January, all right, I'm gonna save.
Mike decided apparently that I'm saving it for January, so.
All right, because it's a little complicated, but yes, those are asset management fees that we have to budget for. For a lease agreement that we have, the support corporation. And other funders that, that helped with our renovation funding. See, other increases. So in twenty twenty three, we are still figuring out the details. But we do plan to do an audit instead of an independent financial. So you're seeing the costs go up for that. It's a more intensive process. And then insurance, actually, we're hoping to see that go down. This year, spent almost fourteen thousand dollars on insurance. And I believe that part of that is because there's some potentially redundant insurance that the town still has for the library. And we have insurance as well. So I'm hoping to work that out before the end of the year with the town manager and all. Questions about administration?
Questions?
Hey, I can say held that a little more, but I could go over most of it. Payroll. So you all see a big jump here from about sixty two thousand in twenty twenty two to a hundred and seventy thousand. Twenty twenty three. That is because, again, of that school grant that we are now considering a part of operating budget. And just, here's a kind of a visual reminder, the director position has always been considered a part of the operating budget. And these are the, the two and a half positions that are really a part of our core operations that we are now putting in the payroll expenses. Just to go back to that number. So in summary, you'll see over the past three years. Again, that major shift is the payroll expense. Because of the, the school foundation grant. Questions, feedback? I'm happy to go back to any slides. That would be helpful.
Well, thank you, Diana, for the presentation. Any council commenter questions? Yes, Councilor Madour.
You first, the only reason I spoke up as far as bringing that up in January is this is gonna be the last meeting of this council before the election. And there will be two new council members, so I thought January would be a better opportunity for everybody to brought speed at the same time. So there wouldn't have to be any backtracking on your part by making that presentation now. The other thing I noticed, revenues are about, gonna be projected to about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And looking through what you just presented and doing just some quick math in my head. Looks like you're probably about two fifty-five. And total expenses compared to revenues. So you, you seem to be fairly close to being on track. If there is, if you find that at the end of the year. That you have a surplus as a carryover for the following year, does that affect your. Your request to the town as far as funding is concerned?
It might, yeah. I mean, it, it could. And it also, we're kind of developing our policies around our endowment at this point. So it may mean a piece of that carries over into the next budget and a piece of it goes for endowment, which then supports the budget long.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Braden, do you mind putting the faces back on the screen in case? Oh, okay.
I guess I didn't show a slide that showed total expenses, but it is equal to the revenue. There's not, there's that zero at the bottom. So it may be because I was kind of summarizing certain categories, but that's how our budgets always look. So just to clarify that as well.
Thank you. Any other council commenter question? Councilor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to thank you, Diana, for an excellent presentation, excellent job. Again, you just. Continue. To, to amaze me, the work that you've done there and the leadership. I'm just really proud of the work that you're doing and the way that our library, the services that are offered in our community. Huge asset to our town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I certainly share that same feeling. Any other council comment? Councilor McKeon?
It is on. Just echoing those comments. Thank you very much for everything you're doing for the library. And just as we can see, it's growing really exponentially and.
Thank you, Councilor McKeon. Any other council commenter question? Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? And seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation and for all your work.
First, and if it's helpful to any counselors, I can send out the slides afterwards. Seeing Mike nodding.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind shutting off the mic. Thanks. Thanks. Councilor Prey?
Oh. I just wanted to. Instances, obviously, the quality report, which I'm appreciative of, and in the report before that, I happen to notice in the audience, we have County Commissioner Laura Sandborn and her aide. Hurry and hurry. But I I hope that a lot of people saw the announcement of what come out of the county and funding and stuff and. Everything from the hospital to a number of the library and and a number of other groups. It's been very beneficial to how the county has handled the the opera funds and contributing that. And I just wanted to give recognition. In my time in the council and her time as the county commissioner, I can't think of too many meetings that I have gone to between. Ourka Todd and down to K Tech or the Higher Learning Facility, the Gazette here, all those items. She's always been there and I just want to express appreciation and recognition of the funds that have come in. Through that and and her work on behalf of the northern part of Penox County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Prey, and well noted and and very appreciated for all your support. It's definitely felt throughout our community. Thank you. And with that, that moves us to our public hearing. Is Counselor Pelletier or he's not on right now? Counselor Pelletier, if you. Thank you. If you could read ordinance number two twenty twenty two, please.
So. Hello there. Ordinance two two twenty two?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Ordinance two two twenty twenty two, providing for amendment to chapter seventy five general assistance code of common mill and compliance with title twenty two M R S A. Subchapter four three zero five four. Be it ordained that the town council of Millinocket and town council assemble at the Millinocket Code, chapter seventy five appendix. Appendixes A through H be amended per the attached appendix. It is further ordered that this ordinance take effect thirty days after in that. Second, first reading.
Motion by Councilor Pelletier, second by Councilor Madore. We are now in a public hearing of our second reading. Any comment from the council or public? And seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Pelletier?
All right.
Councilor Prey?
Thank you.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor McEwen? Hi. Chair going by, Councilor Madore.
Hi.
Councilor Bragg.
Hi.
Passage seven zero, thank you. And if we could just sign it before moving on, please?
We saw Dr. Blackwood once, but he used to find them like it phones that actually worked.
He had ran under an ordinance. Yeah, but he's out there. That's not a lot. Yep.
Alrighty. And Councilor Bragg, if I could have you read ordinance number three twenty twenty two, please?
Ordinance number three twenty twenty two, providing for amendments and updates in chapter one twenty five zoning section one twenty five dash forty one. Schedule of uses in section one twenty five dash fifty dimensional requirements code of the town of Millinocket, be it ordained by the town council of Millinocket and town council assembled. That the Millinocket Code, chapter one twenty five zoning section one twenty five dash forty one schedule of uses and one twenty five fifty dimensional requirements be amended per the attached appendices. It is further ordered that this ordinance take effect thirty days after it's enacted.
Second. Motion by Councilor Bragg and second by Councilor Madore. Are there any public comments? And we're seeing none. Any doubt from the council? Councilor Madore?
Just. I was looking at some of the scheduled uses. And maybe I'm not seeing this, but. Under the. Single family mobile homes. It seems like the mobile homes or what I assume would be trailers would be available in. Several residential areas under this. Am I right, Tony?
Yes, you were.
That was an affirmative from Tony.
Is. I'm just thinking about properties in residential areas. Going forward, like for instance, if the. The development was, I'm not going to say new development anymore because it's not, but if the development was expanded. Would that then allow mobile homes or trailers to be moved in there to as far as any type of new housing is concerned in that area?
Yes, it would.
If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and coming to the podium?
All right, thank you. Anthony Valaro, two one two Cottis Road, Millinocket. The question was, would trailers be allowed if new lots, more lots were developed in the R two zone? And the question is, yes.
Would there be as far, would it be? Would they be allowed as as part of a sub, I mean, as far as like a a mobile home park or?
Uh, no.
Individual units?
Individual units. They would be owned by the property owner and they would not be parked as now you might think of. Like Pomola Park or Kelly Trailer Park. It's not a park per se. It would be just individual properties, except then instead of a stick built house, it would be a trailer.
I just wanted to get a clarification on that because reading this, I wasn't, I I just. Millinocket has always been. All home parks. Housing that's as far as single family or whatever homes, stick built homes. And I just. Now that line is going to be, is going to be with this new. Adjustment, it's going to be kind of clouded as far as where to shall cross.
Well, I'm about the the crossing part, but the. The intent was to increase opportunities for housing development in the community since. Residential properties have depleted. With the advance of Airbnbs and things of that nature. And what we thought. Were trying or advancing was. Changing dimensional requirements and allowed uses in some of the zones that were previously not allowed. As giving options that didn't exist before. And how much this is going to develop going forward? I'm certain. But it's allowed something that didn't exist previously to address the housing question or questions that have been. Rising in recent years as residential properties are in short supply.
I kind of thought that's what I was looking at when I read through this. I wanted to get a clarification so that I could understand. The, and I appreciate your 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 answer as far as why it's changed in this manner. So I I appreciate the the explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Dora. And just to follow up on that. I also appreciate that initiative of trying to offer more opportunities for development. I think that's the right way of thinking. There's also a very big difference between a prefabricated, a manufactured and a trailer home. The way that this is proposed, are you looking at. Requiring that any one of those be on a permanent foundation? Can it be a mobile trailer such as? Even a camper all the way to a mobile home that doesn't necessarily need to be tied to a foundation? I guess I'm just curious if there are any parameters set or if it's pretty much wide open.
It's not wide open. What was addressed by the planning board on the not allowed uses as listed in the matrix. I forgot the exact section number, but it's usually at the back of the document, a matrix of what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and what has to go through site plan review. And what the planning board did is address those nonallowed uses and essentially. Make a decision that certain uses will be allowed. We didn't get into the particulars. However, the matrix is worded. It's just that it's allowed in some areas, not allowed in other areas. And we just made a change, offered or recommended a change.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just noting that if there are any portions of this. That the council or if we get other feedback from the public would like to change, we can amend this at the second hearing. Just so everyone's aware. Councilor Prey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony, thank you for explaining some of this. How many? You have the number of current vacant lots. In the various sections of town. How many do we have in town that there's no buildings on?
Undeveloped lots?
Undeveloped lots.
I'm ignorant of the number, I'm sorry. But someone can correct me if they know better, but I wouldn't think that there are that many, if really any.
Would would you say that the thirty eight? Would be about a correct number?
I can't comment about specific numbers. And if you can elaborate on the number thirty eight to indicate how you arrived at it or maybe the source of information, that would enlighten me and maybe others.
My memory is not that great and that's why I'm kind of asking, looking looking for that. I can remember a few years ago, looking at the various partials that. Ourka Todd had up in the new development. And and the number of lots that exist in town where some buildings have been taken down, so they're vacant lots now. There are some that have deteriorated and and been taken down as well. And of course, when we annexed back in the in the eighties, there was the intent of of expanding outside of the. Current services the town provides sewer and so forth, that those sites would all have to have had. In ground septic systems and so forth. None of that is calculated in this proposal?
Well, the RD zone, rural development zone, is mentioned in the document that's in front of you. So things that, again, were not considered, and now at the top of my head, I can't recall that. That wording, I wrote I wrote this document to the town manager in June. And so it's not something fresh in my mind, but essentially there are these zones was looked upon by the planning board. All right. You got it. All right. Yes. The. The. The RD zone. Offered opportunities for development that other zones did not, like the R two zone or the R one zone. Those ones are essentially occupy. The options to move forward with greenfield development. Is really limited. But the RD zone essentially is mostly undisturbed property that leaves the town options. To move in a direction for residential development or other development. But essentially, that's the intent to, again, increase the the options for. For housing. To proliferate. Going forward. Am I answering any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I understand what what the intent and what you guys tried to do, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
There's roughly twenty vacant lots that are developable. On house size lots within the town right now that has access to utilities. The rest that you mentioned up past the new development that our Dakota knows, a lot of. Roads haven't really been built up there, utilities haven't been brought in. So that's a significant cost, obviously, to do that, but for lots that are vacant. And not necessarily taken as a as a second law, like people have double lots. Individual lots that are developable, roughly twenty. Any other council comments or questions? Councilor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I too appreciate the reason why you're doing this and that we do need more options for housing for families. I'm wondering, is there a definition of the single family mobile homes? I'm understanding what, you know, Councilor Dora's saying and even the chairman. Go leave. I would. I'm not concerned, but I don't want to get away from the characteristics of our neighborhood. So is it a, is it a camper trailer that then can become someone's home? Or is there like, is there a definition of what that would be and would it be?
I'll stick my neck out and I would say no. What would be considered is a residential unit. That essentially is for that purpose and not someone moving in a camper trailer or some. RV type unit to use as a residential setting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other council comment or question? Yes, Councilor Dora?
I. The reason I bring it up is because there there is a distinct difference between what would be considered a modular home in today's construction. Climate and a trailer. And what I am concerned about this, the way that it has been presented, is. The definition of what a mobile home would be, if it was, if the the. Spans here was, say, in a residential area. That it was a modular home, which, again, can be much less than than a stick built home moving forward. I can see that absolutely. But as far as a mobile home, which basically is something that could be moved freely from place to place in a residential area. I I think that the residents of the area and worrying about. This Council Danforth brought up, maintaining a level of of. Value of their properties, for for lack of a better term, would be something that needs to be seriously considered as far as this move is concerned. I just don't think that mobile homes really belong in, say. Developments like in. Areas like the development. I I just don't find, I find that there is enough. That's, again, my opinion, and certainly you've gone ahead and looked at it. But I I just think there's going to be a lot of people who, if in, if indeed a trailer is being brought up. As in a budding neighbor in some of these situations in any new development, I think it's going to have some concerns as far as. Property values and that. So that's why I asked the question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Dora. I think that point of view has been well noted. We do have, as I mentioned, time for the next reading. To look into this a bit more and potentially suggest an amendment at that point. Councilor Prey, if we could wrap this up, please?
Since I would be voting in the next. I believe, and again, going from a little bit of a faulty memory, maybe in some ways, but in some other communities that they have required. These things to be put on a foundation and not on wheels. The wheels are taken off, that they come in. I don't know if that's legitimate or not, or. I just know that I think some of the southern communities in the state require that they had to be put on foundation. And and the wheels are basically the brought in on a trail, set up, jacked up and put on a foundation and the wheels are removed from it. If you're looking for something more permanent, Councilor Madore, then something that that would probably eliminate some of the concerns of these lesser units.
Thank you, Counsel Cray.
Can I make just one?
Please, yes.
Uh again, it was stated previously, but just to reiterate it. Uh the language that appears in the zoning ordinance was addressed without being modified. Uh the comments made by Councilor Madura are appreciated, and that's an option going forward to to do something. But what the planning board did was just take the language in the existing document. And where it wasn't allowed, if it was deemed to be something that was possible, that was essentially the decision made. Not to get into uh advancing o- other forms of residential development. But just taking the the matrix in the zoning ordinance and saying something is currently not allowed. We think that's a possibility going forward, and essentially, it was voted upon to be allowed. So the uh language itself is maybe antiquated, the zoning ordinance was developed in the eighties. So uh what was then forty years ago and may more uh. I would say, uh less of the norm uh today, we didn't get into that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tony. I did see a member of the public, Jesse, if you want to come up, name and address.
Jesse GMA, ten Somerset Street, Millinocket, Maine. Um going from my memory and working in the tax office, I think there was a clear distinction between. Um things that are considered motor vehicle tax and and legitimate mobile home tax, so things like. Motor homes and fifth wheels and any kind of trailer trailer was taxable through motor vehicle. It was considered a motor vehicle. And mobile homes, like you were alluding to, um. That were stationary and not to be designed to be mobile, um that is taxable on the real estate tab. So that would be a clear direction that you could also go in to kind of separate that, anything taxable by motor vehicle. Anything patented by real estate, so just a suggestion.
Thank you very much. Dana?
I concur. I was actually gonna speak um after the public was done and address that exact same um issue. Um as well as, I believe, there is already um in law, I'm not exactly sure where, but I've known people have moved. Trailers out of a trailer park in Pamela Park, and they were were not able to replace until a slab was put down. So I think that is almost a mandatory um item now, so if a trailer is being moved in after a lot is already vacant. It's a mandatory, so I'm just not sure exactly where I recently read it, so just giving you that from a lensight.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? And seeing none, that concludes our first reading. Moving on to new business, uh Council Danforth, if I can agree to order number two sixty-four, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number two sixty-four, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the town warrant for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered that the town warrant for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents is hereby approved.
Motion by Counsel Danforth, second by Counsel Bragden, have you hitters on that?
Yes, um four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and four cents to the ambulance medical bill, medical billing. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars to Kevin Boynton. Thirteen hundred and eighty dollars to Fraser, Fraser Signal Technologies LLC. Twelve thousand, seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents to Hoyle Tanner and Associates. Thirty-five thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty cents to the main water company. Four thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents to the municipal municipal review committee. Three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents to Northeast Paving. One thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars to the fine state elevator company. One thousand, four dollars and forty-nine cents to Michael Zalinski. Eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-three cents to Versus Power.
Thank you, Counsel Danforth. Hopefully, that money we gave to the elevator company will actually serve us in six-hour elevator. Um any other counsel comments? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to council, others in favor, Counsel Bragden, I, Councilor Dora.
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae, Councilor McEwen, Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel Ray. All right, Counsel Peltier.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. And Counsel Danforth, if I could have your offer, read order number two sixty-five, twenty twenty-two, please?
In accordance number two sixty-five, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents is hereby approved.
Second, motion by Counsel Danforth, second by Counsel Bragden, have you hitters on that?
Yes, two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eight cents to Town and Millinocket. Thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents to over associates. And four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents to Versus Power.
Thank you, Counsel Danforth. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to council, in favor, Counsel Peltier.
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth? Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Councilor Dora?
Aye.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. And Counselor Dora, if I could ever read order number two sixty-six, twenty twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number two, two sixty-six, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for date, time, place. Warden for the November eighth, twenty twenty-two municipal general election. It is ordered that municipal general election will be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, from eight AM to eight PM at Stern High School Gymnasium. And further ordered that Michael Knight will shall be warden of said election.
Second, motion by Counsel Dora, second by Counsel Bragden, discussion of the council. Seeing none out of the public? Counsel McEwen?
Just noting it's Michael.
Aye. None of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Councilor Dora?
Aye.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Pass seven zero. Counsel McEwen, if I could ever read order number two sixty-seven, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number two, seven, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for. It's another time. Are you, you did?
Order number two sixty-seven, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for processing absentee ballots for the November eighth, twenty twenty-two municipal general election. Whereas title twenty-one A MRSA, section seven five nine point seven, allows the election warden to process absentee ballot if all the polls are open. And whereas processing such ballots will assist the election clerks and result in an expedited process after the polls are closed. And whereas expediting the process after the polls are closed will result in some savings for the town of Millinocket. Now, therefore, it is ordered that the election warden is authorized to process absentee ballots at ten AM, twelve PM, two PM. And six PM during the November eighth, one twenty-two municipal general election.
Second.
Motion by Counsel McEwen, second by Counsel Dora, uh counsel comment from the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
And Counsel Bragden? Saying no, Mike.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Counsel Pray, if I could ever read order number two sixty-eight, twenty twenty-two, please?
Order number two sixty-eight, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for office hours of the register for November eighth, twenty twenty-two municipal general election. Whereas title twenty-one A MRSA, section one twenty-two, sub- subsection six specifies the process for the register must be followed in registering the voters. And whereas the town clerk also serves as registrar, and whereas the registrar and the deputy registrar are available during polling poll hours on election day. Whereas the town clerk has regular hours on four business days before election day, register the voters. And whereas the open evening hours, as required by law, to receive voter registration will be added cost to municipalities. Therefore, now be it ordered that it's not necessary that the registrar be open to accept voter registration for two hours in the evening between five PM and nine PM. On at least three days before election.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Pray, second by Counsel Dora, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Pass seven zero. Counsel Peltier, if I could ever read order number two sixty-nine, twenty twenty-two, please?
Certainly, order number two sixty-nine, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of fuel bid award. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council accept the bid for heating fuel for the Town of Millinocket for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. From Preble Oil Company and approve the amount of three thousand, three hundred, uh three dollars and. Point three nine six five. Point oh seven cents over the OPI estimate or rack price as Wednesday, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. The two, there were two bids received, Preble Oil, three point three nine six five. And Dead River Company, three point three eight three one four eight, delivered three point six two nine eight contract fix.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Peltier, second by Counsel Danforth. Any discussions in the council? Counsel Pray?
Yeah, I move that we accept the Preble Oil bill.
That's what the motion is.
Yeah.
What's the question?
Any other counsel comment?
Chairman.
Counsel Dora?
Uh yeah, I want to go ahead and again, thank Preble Oil, they've been a great um. Community member and business here in the community. I'm glad to be able to do business with them again, and I'm glad that they were able to go ahead and uh put this out as their their bid price. Uh with the volatility volatility of the market, uh it is nice that they took their opportunity to lock this in for the town and offer this price. So thank you, Preble Oil. Once again, thank you for doing business in town, and I look forward to a much longer relationship with this company. As we've had tremendous success with them in the past and the present, and hopefully in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dora, seconded myself. Uh any other counsel comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel McEwen? Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. And Counsel Bragden, if I could ever read order number two seventy, twenty twenty-two, please?
Order number two seventy, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of Soulville Trail Maintenance Application to the Main Department of Conservation. It is ordered that the approval is granted granted to submit the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three application of the Main Department of Conservation's Mobile Program Municipal Grant. In aid agreement, the application requests a total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, forty-eight cents in state funds, but it be supplemented by local funds. Of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents, project cost of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. In addition to this, the Town of Millinocket will pay Twin Pines Mobile Club fifteen thousand dollars to groom the town trails. It is further ordered that the town manager is authorized to sign and execute any and all agreements necessary to receive this grant.
Second, motion by Counsel Bragden, second by Counsel McEwen, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. Counsel Dora, if I could ever read order number two seventy-one, twenty twenty-two, please?
I don't think so. We uh, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two seventy-one, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for extension of agreement. It is ordered Millinocket Town Council grants approval to extend the agreement. From BNRT Main LLC to BD Solar Millinocket LLC, a limited liability company between the Town of Millinocket. And scheduled to expire on November first, twenty twenty-two, for one year. To expire November first, twenty twenty-three, and it is further ordered that last two sentences of section two point two. Of the lease option agreement are amended as the patch.
Second. Motion by Counsel Dora, second by Counsel Bragden, discussion of the council? And seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Staying, Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Order passes six zero one. Counsel McEwen, if I could ever read order number two seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number two seventy-two, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of Beeline Incorporated franchise agreement. It is ordered that the town council hereby approve the cable television franchise agreement between with Beeline Incorporated, a company which is attached. And made a permanent part of the town's records per the terms and conditions contained therein. The agreement will be effective from October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, through to October twenty-seven, one thirty-two, if approved today. With a single ten-year renewal option subject to mutual agreement of the parties.
Second.
Motion by Counsel McEwen, second by Counsel Dora, discussion of the council? Counsel Peltier?
Yes, uh you know, this franchise agreement's been burned to myself for a while, given the poor public service station. Uh service we've been getting. I'd like to see this tabled and. Uh remanded to the Sustainability Committee to review, especially the franchise fee part of this uh contract. And see if there's any way that we could uh obtain enough funds to make the cat TV a viable. Uh media source for the elderly in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Peltier. Any other counsel comment? Counsel Dora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where I don't disagree with Counsel Peltier as far as maybe tabling this. And sending it to the Sustainability Committee for review, look over the contract a little bit better. Uh I do think that uh twelve thousand dollars and a giving them an actual channel. Uh to, I mean, they provide a public access channel, and plus they provide uh. They, in this agreement here, used to be five thousand twice a year, now it's going to be six thousand twice a year to uh help with the operating costs of the uh. The channel, uh I think is is. Adequate uh going forward. There are some things in here that I. Like I say, the last time I saw this agreement was back, I think, my first year on the council, back thirteen years ago. So uh there are some things here I think that need to be updated, and uh. I think that would be something that's better done in a committee rather than try to be done here on the council tonight going forward. So I agree with Counsel Peltier that this uh could be tabled and then reviewed and brought back to the council for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dora. Any other counsel comment? Counsel Danforth?
Um I would agree with that. I know town manager met um and had discussions, so I would like to hear what his conversation was around this. So I would like to get more information, and I would be in favor of tablebing it as well.
Thank you, Counsel Danforth. Any other counsel, Counsel Bragden?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to table order number two seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, until the next.
You not like to motion, but actually motion?
I am motioning that orders. To be tabled for the next meeting.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Motion by Counsel Bragden, second by Counsel Dora, all those in favor, Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel McEwen? Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
The order is tabled for the next council meeting. Um counselor? Danforth, if I could ever read order number two seventy-three, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, order number two seventy-three, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval for the town manager to execute an ambulance collection agency agreement. Whereas the town needs a collection agency agreement for delinquent ambulance bills, and whereas there have been favorable discussions with the Thomas Agency Collection Agency located in Westbrook, Maine. It is therefore ordered that the town manager negotiate and execute an ambulance collection agency agreement with the Thomas Agency.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Danforth, second by Counsel Dora, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the councils, all those in favor, Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Counsel Dora?
Aye.
Chair Goli Bae?
Counsel McEwen?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel Pray?
Aye.
Counsel Peltier?
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. Counsel Pray, if I could ever read order number two seventy-four, twenty twenty-two, please?
Order number two seventy, dash twenty twenty-two, providing for authorization to extend opera funds. Whereas the Sustainability Committee has identified the need for. Providing for authorization to extend Opera Funds, whereas the Sustainability Committee has identified the need for creation of a dog park at the Camden. Hammond Bergelli Memorial Playground in Little Italy. And whereas the town manager CID and committee have reviewed and discussed the cost and bids for the infrastructure of said pro- or said project. It is therefore ordered that town council authorize the town manager and the treasurer to expend up to nine thousand dollars of town opera funds. For the fencing, signage, and other associated costs for the creation of the new dog park.
Second.
Motion by Council Prey, second by Council Madore, discussion of the council, Council McEwen.
Just noting it's Carmen's.
Okay, then, I don't know. Any further discussion of the council? Well, I for one am excited to see this up here. We've talked about this a few times, the Sustainability Committee, and it's definitely been something mentioned by members of the public for years. Um, I just want to. Uh, express my appreciation to all those community members who participated in that process. Um, gave really good input that also helps create a much better dog park in my view in terms of. Um, speaking to the type of facilities that it'll need to be, so having a bench, having shading. Um, and even supplying a list of the rules uh for entering the park, which will be included in this price as well. Um, so just thank you to the public for being a part of that process and to the town manager. To Amber and to uh the other committee members for bringing this along with me. Um, so just a big thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the council, all of them. Yes, Council Madore.
Uh, I would also like to go ahead and I I think it's a good idea, I think the project is laid out well and I think it's been given a lot of thought. Uh, but on that same note, uh, it has been brought to my attention by a few people that have been in the neighborhood of that. That if Opera Funds are going to be expended on the dog park, it should be also uh some consideration to an upgrade in the actual playground for children. And that playground is in. Much need of an upgrading, so I think after this round, after this expenditure of Opera Funds, I think the discussion knows. A uh upgrade in the playground facility over there for the for the kids in the neighborhood, I think would be uh very germane. I think should be brought forward, thank you.
Thank you, Council Madore, that was uh definitely noted in the last council meeting by the manager recognizing those deficiencies, so. I know he'll be looking at that and bringing up something in the future to address that. Uh, any other council comment? Seeing none, um, all those in favor, Council Bragden. I, Council Madore.
Aye.
Chair Gullyby, Council McEwen.
I.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council Prey.
Aye.
Council Peltier.
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. And Council Peltier, if I could ever read order number two seventy five twenty twenty two, please.
Well, my apologies, but I can't seem to open the document while I'm on this Zoom. And I didn't.
That was an update, I believe, Council Peltier, so my apologies, Council Bragden, would you mind reading that?
Order number two seventy five twenty twenty two, providing for S three grant expenditures approval, whereas order number one thirty two twenty twenty two, positive funding. About to three grants expenditures are required council approval for any expenditures during this period, and whereas the school administration is seeking approval. To purchase two warming tables for the cafeteria and move two buildings at Tofan, therefore it is ordered that the S three expenditures of eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety three dollars and forty two cents are approved. To purchase two warming tables and move two buildings at Tofan, second.
Motion by Council Bragden, second by Council Madore, discussion of the council. Uh, Council Bragden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I actually requested from the manager and um he's not here, the, I wanted in order to talk about. Possibly uh stopping doing these orders and have it so like it was before they they can use. Uh, the funds without our prior uh prior approval. Um, the new superintendent brought up a great point, it is public, um, and the issues that we were having at the state that Josh Beacon brought up are no longer a thing. Um, we're having the flow come back, um, I think it's now time we have that rediscussion on um possibly just going back to what it was before and letting them. Use the unassigned fund balance um to to have these orders instead of us approving it every time.
Thank you, Council Bragden, I appreciate you bringing that up, I was actually going to suggest the same thing. Um, I reached out to Josh Beacon and uh waiting for the manager to return uh from vacation, which is why he's not here tonight. Very well deserved vacation with his family. Um, to have that conversation, so we know exactly where everyone is at, be on the same page, which we generally are at this point. I think there's been a noticeable change and shift in communication and it's been nothing but pleasant and uh and very constructive. Um, so that should be assuming everything goes well and and we're all informed on where that grant is. And I believe it's it's being rewritten as well to address some of the earlier concerns. Um, that should be an item on the next agenda to unpause the uh S R funds to allow the exchange. That was originally intended. Any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Council Bragden, uh, Council Madore.
Aye.
Chair Gullyby, Council McEwen.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council Prey.
Aye.
Council Peltier.
Aye.
Order passes seven zero. And that brings us to reports and communications, the warrant committee for the November fourteenth twenty twenty two council meeting will be Council Madore and McEwen, if you're both good with that.
I will be.
So good as that, Council McEwen, are you?
I don't know if I'll be able to meet. Not sure, it might be.
Well, we're depending on you, Council Madore. Any chair committee reports? Yes, Council Bragden.
Uh, events committee, uh, we have changed your schedule, we will now be permanently meeting every other week. Um, given that there's no holidays, we'll be meeting on Fridays at the library at four o'clock. Um, this is a significant change, we have a lot planned for the coming year, um, we have a goals list that we'll be sending to the council, um, hopefully by the next meeting. Uh, but the big notice is that the last time the council heard about this, the Hocus Pocus movie event was supposed to be tomorrow, it has been changed to Saturday. Just so everybody is aware, um, there was some conflicts with a very big game on uh tomorrow night, so we've moved it to Saturday night. Go Blue.
Thank you, Council Bragden, Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to let you know, or everybody know, as a chair of age friendly committee. I'm participating in a meeting tomorrow, I've got a look at ten minute presentation, um. To give, um, we're part of the M dash, so if you guys remember what M dash stands for, the Municipal Data Across Sectors for Healthy Aging. We're a pilot project with the main council on aging, they've created a data dashboard for us. And they will be at our Thursday, December eighth meeting to provide key points, but I'm presenting some of our local key points to some of the other. Um, pilots, um, sites in the state and Gray, South Portland, I'm not sure, there's a couple others. But we just highlight some of our local debt, local data and what we're going to do to address some of um what we've identified, so more to come on that. But that's going to happen tomorrow, I will be attending that four hour Zoom meeting. Um, with ten minutes dedicated to the town of Millenock. I'll keep you posted, you'll hear more at that December eighth meeting.
Thank you, Council Danforth, any other chair committee reports? Um, hearing in that table to order for Beeline, um, I heard Sustainability Committee, I personally feel Economic Development Committee might be better suited for that. If everyone's okay with bringing it there, okay. Um, so I'll put that on the agenda for the next Economic Development Committee. Um, and that moves us to two minute public comment, does anyone from the public have any comment they'd like to address the council? And seeing none, uh, I'll seek a motion to return.
Before we go, just real quick, I just would like to go ahead and remind everybody that, and thank you for Council Bragden. Tomorrow night, the uh the Minutemen will be playing uh Matt and Arco's Academy at seven o'clock at Alumni Field. Uh, this is a playoff game, they've had a great season, they're six and one, five and one in the conference. And this is a uh, an opportunity Sterns has not hosted a home playoff game in a number of years. So this is a big opportunity for the program, and I'd like to go ahead and see everybody get out and support the Minutemen. Hopefully, not too bad an evening to be out and watching a football game, so. Hopefully, well, I mean, it's going to be in the fifties, so. At this time of year, fifty degrees is pretty darn.
Thank you, thank you, Council Madore, I think we all are looking forward to that game and certainly with some of that. And with that, seeking motion to return. Sorry, no, you're fine.
Well, you mentioned the Beeline, and I just wanted to note that that whole next meeting will become under the um. Not the new items, but the.
Oh, under old business.
Under old business, which will be before swearing in of the new council members. So just noting that if if you want that elsewhere on the agenda.
Uh, we could table it again, if that's the desire of the council, and I'll give the committee more time as well.
I would think that would be best.
That's an option. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Without seeking a motion to return. Second, motions by Council Madore, second by Council Bragden, all those in favor, Council Bragden. I, Council Madore.
Aye.
Chair Gullyby, Council McEwen.
I.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council Prey. Council Peltier.
Next.